Welcome to order, please rise for pledge to the flag in the moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of this country. Mr. Reba, roll call, please.
Mr. Bonomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Mr. Fum.
Here.
Mrs. Kay.
Here.
Mr. John.
Here.
Mr. Mahalik.
I'll personally find a phone.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Garcella.
Here.
And Mr. Zolak.
Here.
Any comments over there, Mr. Fum?
Casey.
Three minutes on agenda items, Casey. You know.
My first question tonight is about number sixty-six, the iReady program. I've heard a lot of great things about this comprehensive tool, great data potential. I'm noticing that there's training scheduled now, two months into the school year. I'm wondering, who is doing the training for this program? How is iReady currently being used across our district? Also, and very importantly, how are we notifying parents about this new program, this new tool, in our schools? And as I have had a chance to talk to Dr. Butler about this past week, how are we getting information out about kids' scores for parents who are interested in seeing those scores? Was hoping to get a little bit more update on that and whether or not that is impacted by this need for teacher training at this point. Also, the differences between the two-page score, the nine-page score, and the complete printout twenty-page data availability. Again, I feel like for kids, especially kids with IEPs, this is a great tool, but I want to know how we are moving forward in working with the parents to get that information out for them and let them know that this information is available for them.
Okay, Mr. Denali, would you briefly respond to who's doing the training and that question?
Training is set up when the purchase, or the services were purchased. There will be training throughout the year at different times. Training, the next training that is going to be set up is based on data analysis. It will go through all the schools and it will provide that training to the teachers because we just completed last week our first diagnostic assessment. So that teachers will all be trained in the data analysis portion of the iReady.
So do we need to do that before we, as parents, can get that score?
No, we had a meeting today. If you are a parent and you'd like to get the results, what we did in the past proceedings when we brought in the tables as an initiative, we did similar thing there. Parents wanted it, we would like to bring the parent in for a conference with that teacher and we would go through the whole report, the parent report and the student profile. That way, once you get the information, you'll have a better understanding of the information that's being provided rather than just giving a packet of scores for you to try and interpret.
For parents to understand this stuff, is it possible to just get the scores? Or is there an absolute mandate that there has to be a meeting face-to-face?
I don't know if there's an absolute mandate, but I think if I was to say something, I would prefer to have the parent there with the teacher that has that child with him.
Now, the problem-
Now, other concerns, maybe that you're seeing that old, you could address that with the teacher so the teacher understands your concerns and maybe she could discuss what she sees in a classroom in addition to the diagnostic assessment.
Casey, as we discussed on the phone, I looked at the two-page parent summary and I looked at the eight or nine-page student profile. I think most, well, those reports I think are understandable by most parents.
Right.
And they're very informative and they're put in simplistic terms in terms of where the child is, what the instructional level is, their progress. The two-page parent report is not quite as specific as a student profile, but I think it's still very helpful in terms of just giving a base level of information to the parent. So I'm going to say that a face-to-face is not a mandate by any-
I'm concerned about schedules. I know that the teacher's availability is from eight fifteen to eight forty-five or, you know, three fifteen to four o'clock and that's not always conducive for working families.
All right, Mr. Denali, and I did talk about which one of those reports would be appropriate to send home with students perhaps, moving into the second diagnostic level. Casey, so our conversation the other day, the other night was very helpful. And I think, moving forward, I think those reports will be helpful to parents.
Okay, just because I know I used up my time there, but I was wondering about number twelve and the open house dates. If you could tell us what they are, as well as the security FYI, those police reports, if they're available for parents in the community at-
They're right there.
They're right.
Right on, right on top there?
Oh, yes, fabulous. Thank you, sir.
They're not yours to take, though. You could look at them and then, we didn't make enough copies, you know, certainly we don't know how many.
There's one per school, that whole packet.
Is one per school.
Oh, wow, okay.
If you want to take the time to look at it later, if you want copies, then just give Mr. Harry a call.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for having them there. Excellent. And that open house dates.
Yeah, Casey, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Denali. The elementary, middle are on Monday night. The high school is on Tuesday night and the academy is on Wednesday night. Career Center, excuse me, on Tuesday night. Thank you, Mr. Denali.
Has that been on the calendar for a while, I feel like?
The difference was we had the elementary and the middle spread over two nights. Casey, we're combining those nights because it worked well for us last year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Fum, anyone else?
Dr. Childs. My name is Robert Childs. I'm a resident of Hazel Township. I'm looking to speak to the item after number twenty-seven. I want to bring to your attention the case of an eighteen-year-old Hispanic student at the Hazel area Career Center. Within the first couple of days, the beginning of the school year, he was accused of threatening, verbally threatening, a seventeen-year-old Caucasian kid. Caucasian kid had previously been put on suspension by the school district for ten days for hacking into the school district's computers. This eighteen-year-old was taken in front of the magistrate. Remember, there were no weapons involved here. There was no actual fighting. He was set, bail was set at twenty-five thousand dollars. Does that strike anybody as being a little bit on the high side? He couldn't pay, so as eighteen-years-old, they didn't notify anybody, they just sent him straight to jail. And he spent eight days in jail before one of the Luzerne County judges reduced that bail to five thousand dollars. Okay, he's out of jail since then. But, and again, I ask you to keep in mind, there's no weapons involved. There was not even a fight, which a fight in this district warrants about a ten-day suspension from school. No, not of an appearance in front of the magistrate. This individual is hanging out waiting for a preliminary hearing, okay? It was just moved from November the second to December the seventh. Nobody from this school district has made contact with this student who is still on your registers as a student. He's afraid to come back to school and I don't blame him. He says, first off, he feels he's being targeted by the security people, he's not being protected. He also feels that if he comes back, that this seventeen-year-old's friends are likely to beat him up. Now, if you look at him, now, what he says is the threat consisted of saying, "I'm going to beat you up if you don't quit haunting me with things about my race." But if you look at this kid, he can't beat up anything. He'd have a hard time fighting his shadow. And, okay, but the school district has dropped this kid as if he were a hot potato and there are, this is going to be, when this eventually comes into the courtroom, it's going to be something the school district is not going to be happy about. I would ask you to please reach out to this young man and at least acknowledge that he's still a student in the school district. It's been two months, okay? And he's going to be three months before he appears for his preliminary hearing. What's going on? I mean, I understand the role of police in a school district. I think the question comes as to whether or not you're dealing with overzealous individuals who are doing more than they were ever supposed to do in the first place. And I would ask you, Dr. Butler, to please, please look back into what you promised us a long time ago and that is that you would be looking at cases in this district where, you'd be looking at cases in this district where you would see whether or not things could be handled in the district and not be sent to the magistrate constantly, over and over again. When I look in the newspaper and I see twelve- and thirteen-year-old kids being cited for public disruption or whatever it may be, that's what twelve- and thirteen-year-old kids do. I mean, who has a twelve- and thirteen-year-old daughter who hasn't disrupted the public? I don't know. But it strikes me that something has gotten out of hand here and it needs to be dealt with. This particular boy, I hope you take a look at specifically. You shouldn't have a problem with that. Thank you.
What a surprise.
No.
Not whatsoever.
What a surprise. He missed his purpose.
What Dr. Childs fails to mention is that this particular young man threatened this person who was accused of the hacking at the end of the last school year. And he was dealt with back then. He was dealt with very leniently. And unfortunately, when school started this year, the way it was dealt with at the end of the past school year apparently did no good because he picked up right where he left off. And he now made threats to the same individual once school started. At this point, he's now eighteen years old. The first level didn't work, so now obviously we take it up a notch. We followed the law. We talked to the district attorney's office and had the charges approved by the district attorney's office. And the young man was dealt with as he's legally supposed to be dealt with, as being eighteen years old. But again, Dr. Childs, what you failed to mention is this wasn't the first time this young man did this, okay? And the first time, he got a slap on the wrist and the slap on the wrist didn't work. We have an obligation to protect the students in the school district. Especially when you mention that, it seems like there's a lot of kids that are being cited for what you think might be no reason, but we don't just cite kids just to cite them, okay? We look at what they did, we look at their record, we look at what they disrupt. It's not what kids do, okay? When, we have an obligation to provide an education to the kids who want to be here and get an education. And we can't allow these kids to constantly disrupt and interfere with the kids who want to be here. If they don't want to be here, they don't have to be here. But what they need to understand, if they're going to just come here and disrupt everyone else's education, we're going to deal with them like we would anybody else, okay? And what people have to understand is every one of the police officers in this district are veteran police officers. They're either retired from other police departments or currently working in other police departments. And the rule of thumb that we use and what I preach to my officers is, you handle it the same way as you would on the street. If it warrants an arrest on the street, it's the same thing here. We're not going to handle it any more leniently here because we can't have kids thinking, "Well, I can get away with things in school that I can't get away with out on the street." Okay, it's not, this isn't like a safe haven where you can come in and act up and do things that there are no repercussions to, that there would be if you're out on the street.
Thank you.
Thanks, Harry.
I, there's some more that needs to be said here. There's a lot of questions about that, what happened last spring. That will come up at the trial, at the preliminary hearing, and I'm sure there is. There are so far four attorneys who volunteered their services to this young man. They've looked at what the records are and they're not impressed the way you are with the way that the law was followed for this young man. And I know of four. There may be more than that at this point in time, but they- Okay, but my point here was, my point, as we're correct, this is not going to be a trial here. My point was that the school district hasn't talked to this young man. Nobody from the school district has talked to this young man in the last two months. He's been out, he's listed on your records as being a student here, but nobody, nobody has missed it. And he's afraid to come back to school, okay? And I don't know how you're going to handle that, whether you're going to send him to a different VOTEC. He's been told to stay away from this other young man. He's in the same class in the VOTEC. How do you get around that? You know, that's, there's a lot here that's not being said, Mr. Harry, and I do understand that. But that comes into the courtroom. What I'm simply asking this board is, when does it become your job to educate a youngster? At what point in time do you, at what point in time do you send the kid to the side and say, "Okay, you're eighteen-years-old, you're going to be out in public in a year, and by the way, we haven't educated you this year"? That doesn't make any sense to me.
Dr. Childs, real quick on your second comment. We did have a very informative meeting with Judge Zola last spring about looking at alternatives to suspension for acts in the school which might not be a level of legal offense that we can look at in keeping kids in school rather than suspending them. So looking at restitution or reconciliation, something of that sort. So that'll be information later for the board, but that's something we're looking at. I just, I just want to respond to this very last part of your statement.
Mr. Fum, anyone else?
That's it, Mr. President.
Okay, approve the board minutes for a regular board meeting September twenty-ninth.
So move.
Special board meeting October eighteenth.
Any questions on the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Agenda item number sixty-three has been tabled. Number sixty-three has been tabled. Dr. Butler?
Thank you, Mr. John. Curriculum and instruction, approve items one through twelve.
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Question, please. Number eight. Dr. Butler, what is on the shirt, the T-shirts that are being distributed?
Just language in terms of Mr. Zola. I can't tell you exactly what the language is, sir.
I think the vice principal.
Oh, thank you, Tammy, thank you.
So the back of it will actually be advertisements for those that donate.
Yeah, but it'll be public, it's been family, community.
And on number ten, I just want to point out that at fifteen thousand dollars for the cost of this, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't have a little bit more information, maybe? So I'm going to vote no on it for that reason, though, just that I think there should be more information on what we're planning to do for this program. And Michelle, this has nothing to do with you, but just so that we as a board know what we're going to do on this program to make it successful. I know that we need to increase the numbers. We're having a hard time competing against private companies that are offering virtual academies and we pay for that. Even though they go to a private school, we're still paying as a district that tuition. So I'd rather see them staying within the district than going outside the district. And, you know, until we can get that, some of that kind of stuff squared away, you know, I think maybe spending an additional fifteen thousand on, I think we were at forty students or whatever the case.
No, it's not. It wouldn't be an additional fifteen thousand. This would replace the actual licenses that we would be trying to obtain.
And in fact, Ms. Medick, would we not be saving money, would that be the eighteen, nineteen school year? We'd be saving a good chunk of this money because our people would be writing our own curriculum. We would own our own curriculum, not have to outsource it.
That is correct. The only piece that we would incur would be licensing, and people licensing would be in the quality of school.
Well, this says to, that you're looking to contract services for rewriting curriculum. It doesn't say that we're rewriting, that we're writing it ourselves.
In the proposal that was given in the committee, all of that is going to be included.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. It's not written like we did with the science and so forth.
Well, we would state that curriculum, the curriculum that we already have written, and just putting it online.
So we're not contracting services, then?
No.
Why is it stated that way?
I'll say that.
Ms. Medick, we're contracting the consultant services to help us for the, yeah.
So we're paying them nine thousand six hundred dollars for consulting fees.
It's a one-time fee.
Right.
Mr. Zolak, you do bring up a good point relative to the committee meeting. You know, some of our folks were not here. Maybe it would be good for them to hear it again, or hear it face-to-face. I think you raise a good point there. Time is of the essence, however, with regard to all of our directors hearing the presentation as some did that were able to be here that evening, you do raise a good point there.
Because I'm even, and I was here and I heard it, but I'm still a little confused now.
So it might be, Michelle, I know where time is important here, but it might serve as well to perhaps table this and have another opportunity for you to speak with the board and then have them be able to answer questions. I think it got kind of late that evening with your presentation. Nice job on the presentation, by the way. So maybe that would be a good halfway point, Mr. Zolak, to table it.
His motion tabled.
I'll make a motion to table number ten.
Second.
Any questions from any other board members?
No.
Mr. Reba?
On the motion to table number ten, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
We have a no vote from Mrs. Kay, Mr. O'Donnell. Any other no votes?
No.
No.
Mr. Bonomo.
He only voted once, you know, Chicago.
You see, he has you.
I have Mrs. Kay, Mr. O'Donnell, and Mr. Bonomo. Any other no votes? Okay, motion to table passes.
Maybe we could just sit down, Michelle, again, and go over some of the-
So we need to vote on one to twelve excluding ten.
Mr. Reba?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Special education, ESL and alternative education, approving items thirteen through twenty.
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
All in favor of approving numbers thirteen through twenty, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Security and Career Center, approve items twenty-one through thirty-two with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call.
Numbers twenty-one through thirty-two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Nutrition, items thirty-three through thirty-seven with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers thirty-three through thirty-seven, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Transportation, number thirty-eight, recommend board approve the following contracted school bus van drivers.
So move.
Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
Thirty-eight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Student activities, athletics, and extracurricular, approve items thirty-nine and forty with one motion.
So move.
Second. Questions?
I have a question. So again, there's another administrator on here, so we're, is he going to be missing any time from school for his basketball duty?
Good question, Ms. Kay. There is absolutely no conflict there. I spoke to Mr. Ritz. There, he has absolutely no need to leave early for practice or games. There's absolutely no conflict whatsoever.
Is Mr. Patron aware of that, too?
Yes, sir, he is, Mr. Bonomo.
Well, how could there be no?
The practices are later than his contractual time. And the games are, Mr. Barletta, are you in the, the game, sir?
They're all at seven o'clock? And the practices are at what time?
Any other questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers thirty-nine and forty, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No on forty A.
No, yeah, I'm going to say no on forty A also.
We have the no votes from Mr. Bonomo and Mrs. Kay. Any other no votes?
I'm going to say no.
Mrs. Garcella. Okay, ayes have it. Motion passes.
Finance, approve items forty-one through forty-nine with one motion.
So moved.
Questions, comments?
Do we have a second?
We got a second.
I'm sorry. Second?
Second.
Okay, questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers forty-one through forty-nine, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Fifty bills.
So move.
Second.
Questions on the bills, anyone? Mr. Reba?
For fifty A through E, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Superintendent's agenda, approve items fifty-one through fifty-nine with one motion.
So move. Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers fifty-one through fifty-nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Approve item sixty through sixty-nine with-
Second.
Questions on sixty to sixty-nine?
So I thought that we already approved the school community liaison position in April.
I believe this position was created in April and budgeted. We never did, after Mr. Quatro was transferred to it, approve a job description. So the one part of this motion is to approve the job description, which will apply to him and the second position. And then the second part of this motion is to post it.
Any other questions? Mr. Reba?
Number sixty through sixty-nine, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
New business, number seventy, recommend board approve.
So move. Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Number seventy, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Mr. John, I don't know if we have any of the new appointees here this evening, but if you are appointed to a position you'd like to stand, we'd like to recognize you at this time. Thank you.
Before we open up the meeting to non-agenda items, I would like to make a comment. I attended a meeting last week that was open to the public at the Hip Building and I had the pleasure of meeting- and I had the pleasure of meeting some of the finest young men and women, I think, in Hazelton. It impressed me to the point, I asked Dr. Butler to call and set them up and invite them to the next committee meetings. And I followed up the next day with Mrs. Curry. They're so happy that we asked them to come. The things that they are doing there are spectacular. And I think it would behoove the rest of the board members, or whoever can make it, to go up there some night. Dr. Childs, you know what's going on there. It was absolutely a thrill to see what was going on there. There was one young man there. He looked like he should belong in a fashion magazine. He had a suit on. Couldn't have been any more than eight, nine years old at the most. He actually had a handkerchief in his pocket of a suit coat. They were dressed immaculately. They were articulate. And it was a real pleasure to see what impact that they're making at the HIP program. They're doing us a favor, the school district a favor, by what they're doing there in that building to those kids. And it was amazing, because Mrs. Curry said, "They're not all Hispanic that go there. It's open to anyone." And you should take an opportunity, if you have the opportunity, to go up and see what's going on there. It's fantastic. It's great. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up to anybody in the audience who has any questions that are not on, or any questions on any items that are not on agendas. No questions at this time?
Mr. President, I just want to say that I did make a trip up to the HIP Center last year. It was during the day, and it was very impressive what they're doing there. I wasn't there in the evening like you, but I'd like to go back.
Extremely impressive. Extremely, Bob. Then you know what I'm talking about. Yep?
If there's nothing else, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, Bobby.
All right.